It's like, I'm not sure I understand that question and answer, but.
Well, if he's not coming on.
I don't know, but Pat, I would really start to take offense at some point.
Monica, are you ready?
I'm ready as I can be.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the March 10th, 2025 Borough Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual notice schedule to the official newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Here.
Councilman Collins. Councilman Manko.
Here.
Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilman Potter. Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Rignolo.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Here.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskonka.
Present.
Borough Administrator Frederick Carr. Borough Clerk Monica Orlando, present.
Will everyone please stand for a moment and sign, which will be followed by a salute with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for public comment, limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is the public portion, is limited to the comments on the resolution listed on the agenda at this time. There will be a five-minute time limit set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Ordinance hearing, second reading. The following ordinance was introduced on February 24th, 2025, and published in accordance with the law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after the reading. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 24-1556 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 4 General Licensing and Business Regulations, Section 4-38 records of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, subsection 4-38.12 service rates.
May I have a motion in a second to adopt Ordinance 24-1556, please?
25-1556.
Oh, sorry. 25?
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Now I will open the public hearing for Ordinance 25-1556. Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close public comments. Is there any council comments? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Yes, aye.
Ordinance, public hearing, second reading. Following ordinance was introduced on February 24th, 2025, published in accordance with law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after the reading. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 25-1557 by title, please?
Ordinance amending Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-20 Stop Intersections, to install stop signs on Pardon Avenue at its intersection with Northbrook Drive and its intersection with Carney Drive.
May I have a motion in a second to adopt Ordinance 25-1557, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Now I will open it up to public hearing for Ordinance 25-1557. Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Will clerk, does any member of council have any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Ordinance introduction, first reading. This is an introduction on Ordinance 25-1558. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by law, and a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on March 24th, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 25-1558 by title, please?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 22 Electrical Service, Section 22-38 General Service of the Revised General Orchesters of the Borough of Milltown, Section 22-38.3 Service Rates.
May I have a motion in a second to adopt Ordinance 25-1558, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Will the clerk, I'm sorry, does council have any comments?
I'd like to discuss this, if it's possible.
I'm sorry?
Am I able to discuss this?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. I have two things. In essence, I agree with this, and I have no problem with it, but I'll bring up two things. The one, if I could read, it's from an article in New Jersey Business and Industry Association, as to rates in New Jersey. Utility providers, well, I'm going to read this, it's like three paragraphs. "We simply cannot push all electrification policies that drive up the use of electricity while simultaneously continuing to adopt policies that shut down generation of clean natural gas and discourage the development of clean natural gas facilities. New Jersey needs to reverse course immediately, not only to avoid future pain from our energy bills, but also to meet the growing energy demands that will come with more centers and other technology. Utility providers in New Jersey annually purchase electricity through auctions. The winning prices for New Jersey's 24th Annual for Basic General Service, BGS, increase for all four regulated electric distribution companies, EDCs, in the state. Starting June 1st, the average monthly bill increases for New Jersey residents will be between 17.23% and 20.20%, depending on the service territory." It's, I'm just explaining because people have asked, and they think that we're doing something to rip the people off, so that's why I read that. But this is also, I have an issue with demand charges. I brought up last year a situation with demand charges, and I understand with nonprofits, and I can appreciate eliminating the demand charges, but we also have businesses, large and small, in town, and especially for the small businesses, struggling just to get by, maybe a one-person office, one-person shop, and use as much or as little electricity as a homeowner, and I think that the demand charge is onerous on them. I'll speak about this another time, but I'm bringing it up because I saw it here, and it's, to me, it's an issue. So I can appreciate for the nonprofits, but I also think for the shops, stores, at least small, Main Street, because if you'll notice, stores are leaving, shops are leaving Main Street, you can look up and down and you'll see that. And this is part of it, because people have spoken to me about this. So that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
I will say we haven't raised rates in over a decade, as far as I heard, and if you averaged it out, the increase of this comes up to like 1.3% per year over that time. So the format in which we do our raises might be something we should look at in the future, but it is, more fossil fuels have been cut down, they haven't replaced it yet, and more data centers, increasing demand. Simply is what it is.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payments of municipal obligations. We have, will the clerk please read Resolution 25-125 by title, please?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $878,287.30.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. Are there any questions?
I do have something to add. For the bill list, it's not a problem with anything that I see there, except there's one thing I'd like to bring up, which is services of Supple Clooney, and that they are still here. I'm going to read this. They began their tenure here as a finance officer a year ago. Now we deal with their supplementation for our staff. I appreciate their help, I appreciate, and I still appreciate their help, especially when there was none. However, I expect that their services are not long-standing, and I say this as I consider the taxpayers and spending of their hard-earned dollars. It's always our job as council members to be as financially prudent with other people's money as we can, and should be. As I have brought up several times before, we need to do a needs assessment. Thank you.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins. I'm sorry, Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Consent agenda. A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are to be considered routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution, please?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its March 10th, 2025, meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, Resolutions 2025-127 through 2025-132, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above-listed resolution be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each was read in its entirety at the March 10th, 2025, meeting adopted by separate vote.
May I have a second, motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Reports from elected officials. Council President Zambrana, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three short reports. The Human Relations Committee met last Tuesday, the fourth, at seven o'clock, in the Borough Conference Room, in person. We try to do that two or three times a year, in person, and our particular meeting was to see each other in person, but also to discuss details of projects that we'd like to tackle in this year. I'd also like to remind everyone that March is Women's History Month. Revitalization Committee will meet tomorrow, and it will be an online and in-person meeting. So we'll meet a little bit online at about seven o'clock, and then we will go to a local establishment to greet each other and get together and talk about some of the events that we have planned for Milltown Day this year. And then last Thursday, the Finance Committee, which consists of myself, Councilman Potter, and Councilman Poznanski, met with our Borough BA and CFO to finalize our 2025 budget, which is planned to be introduced at the next meeting on March 24th. The budget adoption and presentation will take place at the second meeting of April, which will be Monday, April 28th, and that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Councilman Collins give anybody his reports?
I just have the library events that were.
Yeah, I have the library one.
Oh, you sent it to you? Okay, no, it's less likely to talk.
However you feel.
You go.
And then I have the electric report. All righty. So for the library, Drop-In Play on 3/11 at 10:30 a.m. There is a library board meeting, 3/11 at 6:30 p.m. That is open to the public. Minecraft and the Big Bad Wolf on 3/12, 3/15. Registration is required. The Craft Corner, 3/13 at 3 p.m. The Breakfast Art Club, 3/15, 10:30 a.m. For children in grades K through 3. Registration required. Read to a Pooch, 3/15, the date 3/15, at 12:30 p.m. St. Patrick's Day Coffee and Tea Social, 3/17 at 1:30 p.m. Tween Craft on 3/18 at 3 p.m. A 2 p.m. movie celebrating Women's History Month, Little Women, on 3/19 at 2 p.m. After School Jeopardy, 3/20 at 3 p.m. Crochet for Beginners, 3/22 at 11 a.m. Adult Yoga, 3/24 at 9:15. Registration required. The Writing Club, which is, got a lot of people doing this, on 3/24 at 11 a.m. March Madness Bingo, 3/24 at 6:30 p.m. Wear your favorite basketball shirt, and as always, the library thanks you for their support. In the electric report, I will just give a brief few things synopsis of, rather than line for line. You notice a lot of high wind this winter, and over the last couple of years, I know the DPW has really stepped up in taking care of a lot of trees and a lot of problems, and for all of our high wind, we've had, I think, less occurrence in this last year than certainly other years, and, you know, not a lot of us here, but if we could give a quiet round of applause in our heads or in our minds, if we're thinking of them. So there were some streetlights that were replaced with energy-efficient LEDs on Durst, Fern, Reva, Wilson, and South Moats. Battery maintenance was, of course, performed at the substation, and extra patrols were out looking for broken tree limbs with all the strong winds that ever occurred. Calls for low-hanging wires were answered. Diesel generators, diesel generators the borough owns, were tested in the general maintenance of and security of the town. That's always done. The water department has always continued their strong work. Monitoring of the pumps is always done on a regular schedule, and if anyone still hasn't signed up, please sign up for the Water Meter Replacements Program through Vipo. It's on the website. It has been proven to be a very painless process. They're very good about scheduling, they have availability, they give you a text message when they're confirming your date, when they're on their way. It's all moved very well. And so to say it in a polite way, it's kind of a mandatory deal, because what's the eventual end game of that process is, is that it's going to save the town a lot of money if we don't have to have a guy physically go and do meter readings. It will enable that person to be doing other tasks. It will enable electronic billing and a better billing system that will internally, in the offices, save them both time and money, less confusion. It is just better for the town. With that said, when it isn't done, it's going to be a nickel holding up $30,000, to say it that way, meaning that it's got to be done, and, you know, there, at some point will have to be probably some type of monetary incentive to make sure that people who haven't signed up do sign up. It's a nice way of saying there's probably going to be a surcharge for people who are avoiding signing up, for whatever reason, because it's for the good of the town, but really for it to go online en masse and be what it's supposed to be, it's got to be everybody. So beyond that, I will just say, these fire hydrants in town that you may see being replaced, we used to pay outside people a lot of money to do that, and with some of the new staff that we've had over the last couple of years, they take care of that internally now, and they're really doing quite well for us. The only other mention is the reminder that the annual hydrant flushing will begin in April. Please sign up for civic ready for water and sewer updates via text message. Just so people understand it real quickly, I don't want to drag this on too much longer, but some of the flushing that gets done, in understanding just the concept, we have some places where water just stops, some places where it's a loop, and sometimes in those dead ends and corners, you have to do that just to avoid backups and water quality issues in the long run. That's why it happens. It's not, there's a lot of reasons, but you also have to test the hydrants as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee, which is myself and Councilman Potter and Poznanski, met with the Chief of Police, Chief Johnson, on March 4th, on Tuesday night, and he updated us on several things, several issues, one of those being a mandatory updating to the dispatching system, so the chief, as always, is doing a tremendous amount of research and work on that and provided us with a lot of information. We spoke about some new recruits, and I'm going to say in terms of my report that during February, the police covered 62 crossing posts. So now that we have QPA onboard for the township, we're working on a solution with those issues as well. The police in the month of February responded to 1,134 calls for service. Thirteen arrests were made, one for DWI, and others for shoplifting, active warrants, and drug paraphernalia. Just as a reminder, and I'll try to be consistent with this, is that for anything that is a non-emergency situation, please call 732-828-1100. Of course, in case of emergencies, dial 911, and that in bold, underlined in capitals, from the chief, do not rely on social media, as the information that can be shared can oftentimes be incorrect or misleading. So if you need information with regard to any issues, reach out directly to the police department. The fire department, as always, had a very busy month. There were 16 total incidents calls, and year-to-date, 44 of those. The number of hours put in were 243 for the month of February, and 748 year-to-date. The chief, Chief Fama, listed notable fire calls, and there were two incidents where a car went into a pole on Main and Hill and on Washington Avenue, and everybody got out safe, thank goodness. One member has started fire school, which is, that's really exciting, and they're doing, they had a new training class for swift water class. So we went over to the fire department, and we learned a whole lot about that, and what that means, and it's all really great stuff, and they worked together with the rescue squad, and they also received factory training for their new air packs. So I learned a whole bunch about air packs, too, and that was pretty cool to learn all about that. As always, if anyone is interested, please email the fire department, or stop by on Monday night at 6:30 p.m. They're always there at that time for a meeting, and the email address is joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. The Milltown Rescue Squad for February had, the total number of calls were 76, 64 in Milltown, eight on the Turnpike, and four were mutual aid, and the squad, like the fire department, always looking for new recruits. Applications for the next round of training need to be submitted by March 31st, so if anyone is interested, you can email recruitment@milltownrescue-squad.org, or stop by the squad for information. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Poznanski?
Sure. I'm going to start with the Senior Center. March Activities and Presentations. Monday, March 12th, 12 p.m., please join us for a presentation on NJ Save program, presented by, represented by the Division on Aging. NJ Save Navigator will be available to answer questions about programs for seniors accessible through NJ Save. There is no signup sheet for this event. All are welcome to attend. Monday, March 24th, 12:30 p.m., please join us for a question-and-answer session with our Code Enforcement Officer, Marty O'Neil. All are welcome to attend, and no signup is required. The VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Tuesday, March 18th, from 12 p.m. to 3 p.m. The service is available for Milltown seniors free of charge each month. Please sign up on the bulletin board if you are interested. We have a weekly lunch program on Wednesdays, sponsored by Elijah's Promise, on Wednesdays, 12:30 p.m. Please check the calendar for events. There is no MHPC report tonight, but I have a DPW report. First, I'd like to thank Ian and John for their talent and dedication to Milltown for repairing the water main breaks. We've had many. We've had them all winter. I've been at every one except for the first one, and as they are, they're fully in the trench holes, they're muddy from head to toe. They remind me from the movie Dirty Harry, when Harry Callahan is asked why he was called by this nickname, he replies, "Every dirty job that comes along." They're brown from head to toe. Ralph Jeszniewski and Beth came to the Senior Center to do a presentation and asked me to join them for a Q and A. Topics were water rates, smart meters, electric rates, and the battery pack system. A. Topics were water rates, smart meters, electric rates, and the battery pack system. I was asked questions, and then I decided to address each as I've educated myself to explain it to the seniors to alleviate their fears. Um, and that's one thing I've, I've told people, they're afraid. It's not that they don't wanna do this, they're afraid. They think they're scams and, and things like that. So, um, I, I can appreciate what, what Councilman Manko said about, uh, sending notices to, to people about possible fines, but these people are scared. And even though I tried to eliminate their fears, they still have them, and some of the people said they're not gonna, they're gonna wait till we come to them, and I tried to help them. Um, I'd like to also thank Beth, Vidya, Marty, Ralph, John Eckert, Don Herman, and the D P W staff with their patience driving the lack of heat since the middle of December in the D P W building. They hopefully do not need to wear their winter coats, ski pants, and long johns any longer. I believe that the parts have been installed, and the heating system is back. And, uh, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potter's report's gonna be read by Councilwoman Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Councilman Potter, from the Miltown Recreation Department, thank you to everyone who bought tickets for the New Jersey Devils game on Monday, March twenty-fourth. We look forward to seeing you there. Did that, no, that didn't pass. Okay. The soccer clinics at Parkview School started on Thursday, March sixth, with a high registration rate. This four-week program will end on Thursday, March twenty-seventh. The Fresh Theater Arts Program will conclude its winter session with a showcase of High School Musical on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, at Joyce Kilmer School. The Senior Center's new chess program is halfway through its season, and the kids are having a great time. The program is set to conclude on Monday, March seventeenth. The youth ba, the youth basketball program had an incredible season and will be ending on Saturday, March twenty-second. Please come out and support the fifth to eighth grade division in their championship game. The Recreation Department is still accepting applications for seasonal summer employment at the Miltown Borough Pool and Albert Avenue Summer Rent Camp. Please note that there will be no applications available in person at the Recreation Department. All applications must be submitted electronically to the Recreation Department at K, uh, K and McGrath, or, no, K McGrath at Miltownborough dot com. All applications are due by April one, twenty twenty-five. Registration for spring and adult youth programs is open. We are still in need of soccer coaches. We are excited to announce a new adult Pilates program. Registration is now open, and the program is set to begin on Tuesday, April twenty-second. As spring approaches, don't forget to contact the Recreation Department to secure your date to rent Albert Avenue Park. After that, you can complete the fillable application on the Recreation website. On Planning Board, the meeting on March fifth was canceled, and the next meeting is scheduled for April second. From the Miltown Fourth of July Organization, join us for a night of fun and community spirit at our annual Celebrity Bartender Event at the American Legion on Saturday, March twenty-second. This year, we are thrilled to invite the mayor and council to be some of our celebrity bartenders for the evening. Come and see your local leaders in action serving the community. Tickets are now available for purchase at the following locations: Bagel Express, Mike Country's, Mike's Country Market, Maria's, Miltown Convenience, Kelly and Company Hair Design, and Rescue by Lacy. Don't miss out on this fantastic event. Grab your tickets today and be part of an unforgettable night. We look forward to seeing you there. At seven P M., right? I think that begins at seven. And that concludes Dave's report.
Thank you. Um, Borough Attorney, Peter Vignolo?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Borough Engineer, C M E?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Um, first, a report on the water meter replacement project. Um, to date, three hundred and ninety-four replacements have been completed, um, of which twenty-seven are going through their final valid, validation process. That's two hundred and thirty-three installations completed since our last report at the last meeting. Um, three hundred and ninety replacements are currently scheduled, and, um, when you look at the number that are completed and the number that are scheduled, there's about sixty-seven percent of billing cycles one, two, and six that have been completed or are scheduled to date. Um, moving on, a week ago today, there were pre-construction meetings held for the Albert Avenue Park Bike Path Project and the Northbrook Drive Improvements. Um, those projects are, well, with Northbrook Drive, it looks like that's gonna begin sometime in mid-April, and Albert Avenue Park will be, um, a little later, sometime beginning in May. Um, and finally, there is a Utility Committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday to discuss some of the final bidding details for the Energy Storage System Project. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Did Mr. Carr leave a report? No? Uh, Borough Clerk, Monica Orlando?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Election Day deadlines, March twenty-fourth at four P M. is the deadline for primary petitions to be filed. April sixteenth is the deadline to file a change of party affiliation. The form is available online in the clerk's office. May twentieth is the deadline to register to vote before the primary election. June third is the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot. Early voting will be June sixth through June eighth. We don't have an early poll location in Miltown, um, but surrounding towns do. And Tuesday, June tenth, is the primary election. Voting will be from six A M. to eight P M. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council? No. Uh, I have one. Um, as you may be aware, the residents of Southbrook Drive experienced flooding again during the rainstorm last week. Uh, last month, I obtained engineering proposals from C M E and H two M. to examine the situation and determine what steps can be taken to address the flooding. In light of the continued issues, I would ask that the Borough Council can authorize either C M E or H two M. to proceed, so we might supply the residents with some relief. Um, I'd like to close old business. Uh, does anyone have any new business to bring before council? Seeing none. Uh, right. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder that under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input portion of the meeting should be limited to five minutes, and may, after others have finished speaking, be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period.
Steve Gregus, twenty-five Lincoln Avenue. Um, I'd like to comment on a, uh, on the, at the last council meeting regarding both firehouses. I know, uh, it was brought up as far as, uh, what to do with them. I just wanna throw my two cents, and, um, as far as the Cottage Avenue Building, um, honestly, I would be hesitant in really selling that building. I don't see any benefit in selling it, and I think in the, it could actually prove valuable for a future use for the town. What? I don't know, but I just think that assets like that should be kept. I mean, whether it be used for an office space, you know, for a borough purpose, I would be hesitant in getting rid of that. It's not costing the town anything to keep it. So, again, I, I would hold on to it. I think it's a valuable asset for the town. Uh, as far as the South Main Street Firehouse, um, problem with selling that building, here, here's where my issues are. I think we all know, if we were to go and say demolish that building, sell the property, somebody's gonna put a housing unit there, and I don't wanna see that in town. The last thing we need in town is more housing. Um, I think, yeah, you might get some money for it, but I think you have to really look at the quality of life in town. You know, money, the money, yeah, would be nice, but I don't wanna see, uh, housing in town. Honestly, if the town really was pushing to sell it, I'd like to see it sold with a lease restriction on it, 'cause I think you can get somebody to buy that, restore that building, and put a business there. Um, some years ago, when Spirits was still up, was still standing, and the building was up for sale, there were a couple of guys who wanted to buy it. They were gonna restore the building, and they wanted to put a, uh, sports bar there. But the previous owner didn't want that, 'cause I guess the competition was gold to mine, so that idea was squashed. So now, again, the building was leveled, and I don't know what's going there. The property was sold, but I, I just guarantee that there's gonna be some kinda housing building going up there. So, um, again, if the town is really that bent on selling it, put a lease restriction on it. Let somebody restore the building, get a business in there. One thing, we don't need any more housing in town. It's bad enough we're gonna have that big housing project across the street on South Main Street. We really don't need anymore. So, uh, a, again, I, and I do think that this should be brought up, uh, to the, uh, this should be, uh, something that the residents should have a say in. Uh, again, um, I would like to see a lot of comments from the residents of what they would like to see there. Personally, I would love to see, like, to see, uh, some kind of rec center there, something that the town could use to rent out for events. Um, I just think would, again, we're talking about quality of life issues in town, and I think it would benefit the town better. Uh, one other thing, switching to a different subject. Um, about a month ago, my wife had, uh, called the borough, and this was in regards to, um, a neighbor of ours had passed away, and she called up about installing a bench and putting up a small garden at the tennis courts over on Porton Avenue. And, um, I don't know exactly what the conversation was, but apparently this, I think, had to be brought up to council. Um, and again, this is something that isn't gonna be paid for by the borough. Uh, ourselves and some family members are gonna be doing the work and paying for everything. So, um, I don't, I don't know, was that ever brought up to borough, and who actually can, we'd like to know who can we get permission to go ahead with this project for?
Mr. Vignolo, could this be done by a simple resolution, or?
I can take a look into it, and I'll get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, we'd like to, you know, we'll call again, and we'd like to hear something, but, uh, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, Russ Einbiger, one fifty-two A, North Main Street, here for a couple of capacities, and I have a lot of capacity, so that's good. Uh, first of all, for those of you that came this weekend and last weekend to some of the fun events that happened in Miltown, the Masons are friends of mine, and they are very happy. They had one of their best turnouts in years at the breakfast, and if you don't know about the Masons, they'll be glad to tell you. They do some of the wonderful things that go on all over the country, but especially our particular chapter here does a lot the lodge. And this past weekend, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, you were there. I didn't get to be there the whole time, unfortunately, but our Boy Scouts once again had a great support from people around town, uh, at our Annals Spaghetti Dinner, and we're helping these folks, uh, turn into good young citizens, and hopefully when they get old like me, they'll be good older citizens. Um, thank you again for that support. And while we're talking about support and going for things, well, one of the biggest things we do as, in town, as you know, is the Fourth of July. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Payne, for talking about that, um, the Celebrity Bartender Event. There's a lot of things that'll go on this year. Besides the council, we have some of the other old tried and true people and some new people, including the man Steve that does the actual explosions here. You know, the guy that does the big, big mo, you know, the big, uh, executioner thing that everybody likes that blows up, you know, and you can feel it from under feet away. The guy designed that, his comment is gonna be one of the bartenders. Who knows who he's gonna serve you as a drink, but, you know, we're lucky. The reason I'm bringing it up also, people have been asking us, uh, who the grand marshal's gonna be. Not gonna announce that tonight. We're pretty much certain who's gonna be, but we're gonna wait to that event, somebody bartender, like we traditionally do, and we'll announce the winner there, who's gonna be the person. And the last thing is, if you have not gotten tickets yet, like, besides what, uh, Councilwoman Payne said, they're also available online through the Give Butter site that we've used for the last few years. Um, you can go to miltownfourthofjuly dot org. You can go, we have it on our Facebook page, our Instagram page. You can see any, uh, member, okay? I have, I think, posted, I think, Monica, I think I have it posted here somewhere, one of those posters, right? Yeah, it's all over the place. So we'd love to see you there. Every penny we make from that goes right to the fourth, right back to the town. And one more thing, and this is a really good thing, we're doing a really big raffle this year, and just starting to announce it this week. It's one of those hundred-dollar ticket raffles, where you might wanna go with some friends. Already sold about eight or nine just over the last couple of days, uh, just by word of mouth, but, uh, would print up to three hundred of them, tops. So if we sell three hundred of them at a hundred dollars each, you guys do the math, that's thirty thousand dollars. Split it in half, that's fifteen thousand dollars to give away, with ten thousand to the first prize, a thousand dollars each to the other prizes. So we give away fifteen thousand. Uh, obviously, it'd be less if we don't sell three hundred, but I'm pretty sure we'll sell most of them, or not all of them. So, you know any people from the Fourth of July Committee? We'll be looking for you for the next couple of months to, uh, help out with that, too, because we have a lot of stuff planned for this year's Fourth of July as the hundredth time we've done it in Miltown, and that's why the theme this year is remembering the past and igniting the future. And thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. I will close audience comments. Are there any council comments?
Yes, I have three things to bring up. The first is, uh, about the water rates. Uh, there was some confusion last, last week, and I actually contacted, uh, our utility tax collector to make sure, and I'm gonna read its three sentences. So this comes from her. "The rates adopted in June twenty, June twenty twenty-four will end after the first quarter billing of twenty twenty-five. The hundred and fifty-dollar surcharge affected two billing quarters, the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four, and the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. The first quarter water sewer billing will end in March." So, um, I'd also like to take the time to, again, thank Fred Carr, Monica Orlando, for supporting Miltown in our time of need to keep us operational. Though they have moved on to other commitments, they've been guiding us with continuity until we're back fully functioning and on our feet. So again, Monica and Fred, uh, thank you. Um, I also wanna discuss something that I had a big interest last year. Um, I, it's the old D P W area compound. Um, I'd like to discuss, you know, it's, it's, um, the remediation and revitalization back to its natural state, I believe is beneficial to the citizens. The old D P W has been an eyesore for many years. I, I had asked the director, Ralph Jasnowski, last year if his crew could do some cleanup. In a few days' time, they made a huge difference, giving the area a new face. I'm hoping there can be ongoing revitalization of the site, and we need consensus of council to determine depth of remediation of the area. I had asked Ralph if his people could clean up the site that is very visual to every resident as they crisscross Miltown. As I felt last year, and this, every improvement people see is a feeling that their taxpayer money is helping them, their biggest investment, their home, and restoring Miltown's neglected beauty. And, uh, thank you.
I did have a couple of quick things was, um, I, I do kinda agree. It would be nice to have that D P W area, if not completely revitalized, which over time could possibly happen, but maybe, uh, just looking prettier.
Thank you.
I was mentioning to me, uh, Mr. Mayor, when it comes to the water, uh, meter replacement, that there is a wait list. So I'm kinda one of those people, like, I'm free next week. I'll call next week, 'cause I have some free time. Don't do that. Call, get in, and then, you know, uh, get on the list, 'cause it will take some time. Um, additionally, that battery thing that you saw on the, on the agenda for today, um, it's just a great benefit for the town, um, with, you know, low outlay, very low outlay, almost no outlay, uh, was started, and it's just a good process. So hopefully we'll see that moving forward, um, fast enough to help us address the oncoming onslaught of energy-rising costs over the next year or so. Um, and also, um, once again, my daughter says, "The Masons make the best pancakes." Thank you.
Better than your wife?
Hey, we recorded you. I'm not saying pancakes are better.
Okay, uh, we'll close council comments. I only have a quick comment. Uh, I just wanted to provide some follow-up comments, 'cause I received some calls, uh, between the last council meeting and, uh, and recently. So, um, I reached out to our CFO, and he indicated the water department itself is not in debt for twenty million dollars. Um, the total debt for the borough of Miltown is approximately twenty-nine million dollars. The water department is six, six million, the electric is ten million, and the, the rest of the debt is general, uh, borough debt. But that's, that's like when you get a mortgage for your house and you, you pay it off over time. That's what this is. This is, uh, projects within the borough that, uh, large capital projects that were done, and it's being paid off over time, like the, the D P W complex. So, and that's, that was, uh, I think, a ten- or twenty-year, uh, mortgage or, or, uh, uh, payment option, and that'll be paid off soon, and then the debt ratio will drop down. So, uh, that's just to provide some clarification, uh, for the residents that, uh, reached out to me, uh, so I appreciate that. Uh, will the clerk please read Resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-three, please?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one permits the Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas these public bodies have the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss pending litigation, whereas minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Miltown, Caddie and Middlesex, State of New Jersey, the public be excluded from this meeting.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, and seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins? Oh, Councilman Manko. Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Pozzantky?
Aye.
Peter, are we staying here?
Yeah. That means everybody has to leave, sorry. Don't worry, I told Peter has to be quick, so.